Come on down. Say again, Ms. Sproul. Okay, our second speaker will be Maureen Posner, President of the SCA. Ms. Posner?
Good evening. I am Maureen Colgan-Posner. I am the President of the Springfield Education Association. About a year ago, some of our members of color started meeting to discuss what it feels like to work in the Springfield Public Schools and how they could support each other. Through their conversations, they realized there are problems in this district around hiring, retaining, and promoting practices for all educators, but especially for educators of color, or our ALANA group members, as they have called themselves. These practices disproportionately affect our ALANA members. They also affect our students. So tonight, I would like you to hear from our educators and students. I would like you to hear about this issue from their point of view. We are asking you to join us in finding solutions to this important issue.
Thank you, Maureen. Mr. Tim Collins. Say again, Mr. Tim Collins.
Good evening.
Good evening, Tim.
I'm here to talk about a couple of things. At the last MTA annual meeting, there were two new business items passed. One of them was calling on the MTA legal staff should the legislature not pass and the governor sign into law the recommendations of the joint House and Senate study on the foundation formula, which came to the conclusion three years ago that the state was underfunding our schools to the tune of over $1 billion a year. Pat Roach, our Chief Financial Officer, three years ago did a stunt happen. If the legislature doesn't pass it, and although there is support in the Senate, it doesn't look like there's support in the House, the MTA is going to file suit. And I would ask that this body and the city of Springfield prepare an updated version of what this lack of funding has meant to the children in our public schools and join in an amicus brief supporting that suit. The second resolution, a new business item that was passed, called for the MTA to take legal action to stop the implementation of the accountability system here in Massachusetts until such time as the schools are fully funded. Now, this accountability system of ours, which says the bottom 20% of our schools on the MCAS are failures. In my mind, this is totally incorrect. The MCAS, which is a criterion reference test, a fixed target that doesn't actually measure individual students' growth, is a crooked yardstick. And quite frankly, there is only one assessment that's given in every state of the Union to a scientific sample of students in every school district, gifted and talented kids, wealthy kids, kids living below the poverty level, non-native English-speaking kids, kids in special needs. And over the last decade, the students in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have been number one on that assessment. The bottom 20% of our students would probably outperform the top 60% of students in the United States of America. This has done extreme damage. It's understandable that no city council, or town council, or mayor, or a person running a town would want their schools to be labeled the way this current accountability system is labeling schools. It affects the property values, and no one wants to see that happen to their school district. But it's not a true assessment of the work that we do here in the city of Springfield. We need, and I would ask you to support that effort, if there's legal action taken against the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to suspend and then study the MCAS to see if it is a true assessment of the work that is done. In my years working here for the public schools, I have seen the amount of art teachers, music teachers, shop teachers, home and career teachers, civics teachers diminish dramatically because we are locked into improving test scores, which don't measure the actual human growth, the social, the emotional, the spiritual, the behavioral growth of our students. And this is wrong, and it's damaging. We're no longer educating the whole child. Back when I started teaching, in the school that I taught in, we had four shop teachers, two home and career teachers, two and a half music teachers, two art teachers, four PE teachers. When I retired, that same school had two PE teachers and one art teacher. Every child needs a chance to shine during the school day, to feel like they are at the top of their class, and that feeling is transferable to all areas of school. Gives them a reason to want to come to school, to feel good about themselves in school. So I ask you to support these two things, should they come to pass, and it looks quite likely that they will, that the governor and the legislature will not have the courage to do the right thing and raise the revenue to support our public schools to the manner in which our children deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Audrey Murph Brown. Audrey Murph Brown, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Audrey Murph Brown. The schools our children deserved are compromised by the actions we have not taken. Reference has been made to how far we have come as a district, that in the 1970s, the school committee was the biggest opponent of school segregation. Ironically, the staff continues to look like it did a century ago. We have not come far. I thank you for launching the Race Matters Initiative. However, there has been no more sustainable action. The impact of the talk has not changed the composition of our teaching staff. The message has been superficial and at best weak. There are schools where there are no educators of color. Opportunities are compromised and denied by practices that speak to institutional biases. Springfield Public Schools have a host of knowledgeable and highly effective educators. Myself and many others are doctors of education with many years of experiences in this system. It is impossible to be in the count when information about opportunities are selectively shared. We are here tonight to call attention to what is not happening. Building administrators are being held accountable for students' absences, students' tests, and staff attendance, variables that they cannot even control. Conversely, the one thing that they have control over is diversifying their staff. The district's silence regarding this issue speaks volumes. Every member of ALANA and every social justice ally will tell you of their joys of having educators of color in their buildings. And they will also share with you the challenges that staff and students experience when there is no one of cultural alignment. School to committee, we are not playing. This is not a political game. We are creating the schools our students deserve. Recently, the school department was the beneficiary of a grant to increase the presence of and support for paraprofessionals to pursue teaching careers, and we applaud you for that. That's a good move. This current school committee and our city council represent the diversity of our city more than it ever has. We need our schools to look the same. The SCA and ALANA will join the city council, and we are willing to assist you in building a diverse, incredible school system. Recruitment efforts are only one part, one part. We need to retain and promote the highly qualified educators here in this room. Make no mistake, we do exist. We are competent, we are qualified, we have a right to these positions. Now you see us, and we're going to see you, because we are the voting public. We are here to tell you, no more, the system of nepotism and favoritism and institutional biases and prejudice must stop now. We believe we can do this, we want to be a part of doing this, and we are demanding for the schools our children deserve reflective of all of our diversity in this city.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Doctor.
We have a right for that, we demand it.
Thank you very much. Dominica Noonie, Dominica Noonie, please. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing me to come. My name is Dominica Noonie. I am currently a school adjustment counselor in the city of Springfield. I've come to you tonight to bring two points. One, to reference, this past fall, we asked our members and your teachers, are you aware of a certain posting, our behavior specialist posting, that was posted three different times? Overwhelmingly, your current staff that have the knowledge, the background, to develop skills and training in the content area that is significant to these jobs, had no idea those postings existed. Now, one can say over 80 respondents that they missed the posting in the external site, but one can also say that the district had a plan already in place of who was filling these positions, therefore not giving equal and adequate hiring practices. I'd also like to mention, at this time, SPS has 80% of students of color and only 15% of faculty of color. As a public educated student myself, I could only imagine the amount of rich, in-depth culture I missed out on due to the imbalance of a diverse staff. I would like to encourage this school committee to support the district in preventing this imbalance from occurring to future generations. And again, thank you so much for allowing me to come tonight.
Thank you very much. Nadia Vasquez. Ms. Nadia Vasquez.
Good evening.
Good evening, dear.
Mi nombre es Naida Vazquez. Soy Puerto Rican. Una trabajadora social con licencia clínica. And I am bilingual, bicultural. Within the Hispanic community, other than Puerto Rican, I am a Massachusetts public school education recipient from the 70s. And it wasn't until my family and I moved to Puerto Rico as a child that I saw someone that looked like me, that provided me with the primary education that I received. Nowadays, here, I walk into those same schools and hallways that I received my elementary education as an outpatient therapist. I see mostly students that look like me and speak the language that I speak, as well as their families. But little do I see staff that look like those students and myself. As an intern in Springfield Public School, I encountered many parents expressing relief that there was someone that understood their language and able to transmit their message in the language that they struggled with and be heard. I found myself in school meetings where, other than the parent of a client and myself, only an outside interpreting resource spoke the same language as the parent and the child, because there were not enough bilingual staff. I believe that with my high education background, with a bachelor's and a master's degree from Springfield College, living in Springfield, and serving our community as a professional, for many years I've been here, as well as I've increased my knowledge, my education, trainings, and my skills, I do believe that I am highly qualified, highly competent, and I am available. Thank you.
Thank you very much, dear. Jacqueline Williams Heinz. Jacqueline Williams Heinz, please.
Qualified. 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 Qualified.
We'll have decorum in this room so the speaker can be respected to have put her words across. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Williams Heinz, and I raised two sons who went through the Springfield school system. My youngest son diagnosed on the autism spectrum and is part of the special education system in Springfield. Studies conducted by the CDC in 2014 report the statistics of school-aged children 6 to 17 at 1 in 50 being diagnosed with autism. Taken into consideration the disproportionate amount of African-American children with delayed diagnosis of autism or misdiagnosis of ADHD, oppositional defiance disorder, conduct disorders, I would like to know what can the school system do to help support these students who are often met with punitive remediation instead of culturally competent classroom supports? I'm also concerned with the current trend supporting 504 civil rights accommodations to our students in lieu of the more comprehensive and expensive classroom supports guaranteed under IDEA and is written into individual education plans. And finally, as our students in special education transition into adulthood, I would like to see more supports that are bridging them under Title I of ADA instead of being transitioned into the school-to-prison pipeline. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down this evening, sir.
Thank you for letting me share. My name is Michael Gattanio. I'm a special education teacher in Springfield High School. I've been in a number of urban districts as a special education teacher. I've worked in Hartford, I've worked in Boston, and I just feel like, I don't have anything really terrible to say about the district, but I do think I have some good things that I've seen in other districts that I would like to share, that I think could work here. One of the most successful ways I've found of teaching or working in an urban school is if there's collaboration. I'm talking from the ground up. I'm talking teachers have to be heard, staff has to be heard, with administrators. You know, just have a collaborative team, have people share their ideas. There are so many people, so many really intelligent teachers, staff members, paraprofessionals, who have so much to give and so much to offer, and we're just not using that resource. It doesn't make any sense to me. So that's the biggest point I have. A few suggestions I have for that would be real leadership teams in schools, made up, you know, offer whoever wants to come to that meeting, sure, it's usually before the school day, or it could be after the school day, but have a real leadership team. Relevant professional development. Professional development that we feel we need, not what the district says, you need this, you need to write better lesson plans, you should write, you should put this on your board, on your objective board. Those are things that may work or may not work, but listen to us. We have other ideas of things that could work, and we know how to reach the kids because we work with these kids. Things that are successful in other districts may be successful here, but we have our own culture. Springfield has its own culture. And so the schools, if you listen to the people who work in the schools, you'll get some great ideas. In order, you know, I didn't really know about this whole thing with the union coming down, but to solve this situation, interview teams. When the school, the best school I ever worked at, they sent out an email, we're interviewing the new assistant principal. Who wants to be on the interview team? They get a committee, it's made up of staff, counselors, everyone, whoever in the school who really wants to put their time in and actually volunteer their time will join it. And then you'll have people of color, you'll have more people who, people who we think belong in the school, not somebody who's legislated to come into our school. And the last thing I want to talk about is the alternative schools, which is where I work. The school-to-prison pipeline, it's something that really concerns me a lot. I volunteer, I'm a mentor in the prison system, and so I meet the prisoners in Ludlow, and I hear them say, oh, I went to that school, I went to that school. There's got to be ways that we could make, that we could bridge this. And right now, we're focusing for these kids on just academic rigor, and they have so many needs, so many social-emotional needs. This is what we have to address. If we can address their social-emotional needs, we can reach them academically. But until we reach them, until, you know, it's the hierarchy of needs, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. If you're not eating, you're not, you know, you're part of a gang, you know, I hate to say it, they're reaching out to the gangs, and we don't even have a gang taskperson. I mean, have somebody, you know, people from the community. We need a guy, we need interventionists, people, when these kids are melting down, somebody who can say, hey, what's going on? You know, I've been there, I can, I know how to, I know what you're going through, and you're acting stupid, or whatever you're doing, but we need, we need the right people to talk to them. You know, I felt, today I was talking to a student with another person, and he's a student of color, we're both white, and I'm just thinking, how much better, how much more powerful it would be if there was somebody of color in this room right now? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Zuma Lee Rivera. Ms. Rivera?
I'm here. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Zuma Rivera. I'm a parent of a seven-year-old asthmatic child who attends her inner school and who also has ADHD. I'm also an organizer and neighbor to neighbor. I'm passionate about the preservation of our children's innocence and ensuring that our children have the best learning environment to succeed, and making sure that the rights of every student is respected. Last year, we came forward to the school committee to express our concerns about the amount of children being arrested in public schools. And we acknowledge that there is a decrease in the amount of arrests, and while this is good steps moving forward, we feel strongly that there are many areas of improvement to the MOU between the Springfield Public Schools and the Springfield Police Department that can go a long way in giving our students the best environment to succeed. In school districts across the country, students are going into what's now properly known as the school-to-prison pipeline, where young adults of underprivileged backgrounds are more likely to be incarcerated. We in Springfield have the opportunity to work together and to go in a different direction. In the statement that I will submit to the committee, I have outlined some changes to the MOU, and I'd be glad to discuss this further and work with you on these issues. By implementing these changes, we believe that we would provide a better atmosphere for our children. First, it's our belief that we, our government and the community, work best when we have access to important information and means to communicate with each other over decisions that are being made in the public schools. We believe that there are more, there needs to be more public spaces so that we can have speak-outs throughout the year and come together and share our thoughts and concerns with our elected officials. It's also important for us to have access to information regarding our children's well-being, treatment, and discipline in school, especially information regarding the key role of the Quebec Unit in the schools. We feel the rights of the students should be respected, and in the absence of real and immediate threat, SRO should not be physically, should not use physical force or restraint against our students. Additionally, we need easier mechanisms for our students, parents, and administration to file complaints, whether orally or written, and also where parents can submit complaints in their narrative, in their, in their language. We believe SRO officers perform a difficult job and should be provided with more trainings on children and adolescent development and psychology, positive behavior interventions and support, restorative justice techniques and tools with working with children with disabilities and special needs. Lastly, we would like to acknowledge the initiative that some of our school committee members and city councilors in promoting the increase of civic engagement for the availability of answering questions. We'd also like to acknowledge that the school system leadership for taking steps in decreasing the numbers of, amount of arrests, we believe that these efforts need to be expanded upon, and most importantly, systematized, to ensure the long-term success, and doing this will only strengthen our school system. I look forward to speaking with you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. One last cause, Ms. Sproul here from the Office of the Treasurer. Say again, Ms. Sproul. Ms. Sproul, you'll be our last speaker.
Good evening.
Evening.
How are you guys?
Good.
I'm here on behalf of the Treasurer's Office and the Office of Economic Empowerment. We have a pilot program that some of you may already know about that's happening in Springfield called SORME. SORME is a program that combines workshops, financial literacy workshops, and parent engagement to get students to start saving for college in middle school. So we target middle school families, however, it's open. Sorry.
That's okay, you're doing fine. And hello to Treasurer Goldberg, too. We appreciate her efforts with the MSBA and everything.
Thank you.
And this program.
So we host the workshops at the South End Middle School on Margaret Street. So far, we've had to reschedule our third one twice. The next one will be April 5th, and then our final one will be in May, May 10th. The next two consist of workshops that explore the different types of colleges and those costs associated with those, and then connecting families with resources to pay for college. One of them being, we'll help them open a 529 investment account that goes towards college expenses, so it can be paying for the classes, paying for books, paying for technology, but it's also the rent and the room and board, travel to get to a school across the country, all kinds of things like that. It's very flexible. It doesn't go against the asset test, so many families that depend on DTA, or WIC, or any kind of assistance-type programs, they don't have to worry about saving this money and then affecting those benefits. So that's a huge thing for families, especially in the area that we are targeting. And it's flexible, so you can, if families, like if the one student they opened the account for initially decides they don't want to go to college, or they go join the military, or they get a full ride, you can transfer those funds to another family member so that the money doesn't go to waste and you don't risk that penalty. I'm happy to share information with you guys, leave it with you, or send it via PDF, and I also have flyers. So we do all of our workshops in Spanish and English. We accommodate for any languages that we don't have onsite, and we provide dinner, and we have activities for little ones if families choose to come. So I just wanted to share that with all of you guys at once. Thank you, and that's all. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Discretion.
Can I have one of the dates again?
The next one is April 5th, at 6:00 PM at the South End Middle School.
So can I have another question?
Sure, go ahead.
Is it the whole family, the parent and the child, or just the student?
It's the whole family. We encourage, it's mainly for the parents, but I'm a parent, I have to bring my son, as you can see, everywhere, so it's definitely family-oriented, so we encourage the families do it together, so the student is a part of the conversation as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate Treasurer Goldberg and Superintendent Warwick, she contacted our office on this initiative also. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the public speak-out. You're all welcome to stay. We'll have a one-minute recess, then we'll go into our regularly scheduled meeting. scheduled meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And for the record, School Committee Woman Denise Turs is unable to attend this meeting. If we could all please rise for a moment of silence and to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I'd like to wish the best, we're also joined Cassandra, our student rep from Duggan Academy, we appreciate you being here. I'd also like to wish the best to our Central Lady Golden Eagles as they go to defend their state Division One basketball title this Saturday at the Mass Mutual Center. And also, I know Superintendent Warwick, myself and School Vice Chair Chris Collins were at some of the games. And I also want to give a shout out to Putnam Vocational Technical Academy, the boys team played with a lot of guts and courage, and to the girls team that Saturday morning at Curry Hicks, how they played so tough against Munson. So we wish them the best. And also to Teaching Award Diane Mackey, Central High School, be honoring, she just won a, an award on that. So if you can, please come down to the Mass Mutual Center and that'll be Saturday early evening to cheer on our Central Girls as they look to defend their Division One basketball championship. We'll now move to approve the minutes of February 1st, 2018 and February 20th, 2018, school committee meetings, March 1st, 2018, Chapter 74 Advisory School Committee Meeting, that was at Putnam Vocational Technical Academy. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed, the ayes have it. These are now items requiring a vote of the school committee. This is to approve City of Springfield diploma for World War II veteran Lloyd Addison Adams. Superintendent Warwick, please.
That is a great story, Mayor. A family contacted us, Tad Tokars, he graduated, he actually completed the requirements years ago at Technical High School, finishing in 1948, but never received his diploma at that time. Tad Tokars was nice enough to dig in to the old records from Technical High School, which he has over at Central High School, and found that he in fact had completed all the requirements, qualified for the diploma. So we produced a diploma for his family. He's unable to attend tonight, but we've sent that to his family and his family is very grateful. But again, Tad went above and beyond the call, as he always does, digging into the old records from years back and getting a diploma for him. He was not only a World War II veteran, he went back, served in the Korean War and earned a Purple Heart. So a great American hero and we got him the diploma that he didn't originally get. So I respectfully request that we provide him with this diploma.
I think that's great.
At least we can do Superintendent Warwick, and thank you to Principal Tad Tokars and shout out to the, the boys' basketball team, which won the Western Mass championship, but got beat in the Central Mass game on that too. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments pertaining to granting the diploma? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gresham, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor, roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Discretion?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, more than sufficient vote, this matter passes. Congratulations and thank you for your service, Mr. Adams, we appreciate that. B is to approve a City of Springfield High School Certificate of Attainment for Charles Sierra. Superintendent Warwick, please.
And we reviewed, we reviewed the records for Charles and he completed all of our requirements qualifying for certificate of attainment. He didn't pass the MCAS, so he doesn't qualify for a diploma. So I recommend approval. Yolanda went through and verified, he had earned all the credits for the certificate of attainment.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick, any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question.
Ms. Naylor?
Just for clarity, so when students do get their certificate of attainment, are they informed that they would still need to go back and get MCAS in order to have those?
Right, and they can still get the diploma, they just have to go back and pass the MCAS piece, but this proves they completed all of the systemic requirements for the diploma.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, her second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham, roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
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 Yes, more than sufficient vote, this matter passes. Congratulations, Mr. Sierra. C is to approve the Central High School Junior ROTC Drill Team, which is in the house tonight, traveling to Dayton, Ohio. For the national drill competition for March 22nd through the 25th, 2018. You represent us so proudly. Could you please, please all stand, please? Superintendent Warwick?
As a team that's won many awards, I think at some point, we're gonna have to put an addition on Central High School to fit all the trophies you've won already. But good luck in the competition, sounds like another great trip and I'm recommending approval of a field trip.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick, any questions or comments pertaining to this matter?
Well, I'd just like to say-
Discretion, certainly.
That they look so nice in their uniforms. Very well.
Sharpen those dress blues.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham, any other questions or comments?
I do have a question.
Ms. Naylor?
Just as a mom, asking a question, so-
That's good, that's good.
I know that all expenses are covered and everything, how exactly are they, they're sleeping in a hotel? And do they give us a level of detail when you approve these as to like how many students are gonna be in a room, or those type of regulations that are in place to make sure that the chaperones are aware of what they're doing?
They give us some, some detail and then the person going on a trip is here to answer any further questions, so.
Okay, yes.
Anyways, thank you again.
Thank you.
For having us. Anyways, I'm Major Kita over at Central High School Air Force Junior ROTC. In terms of your question that you have, we do have, you know, like maybe six chaperones joining us, coaches, parents and mainly the instructors. The rooms are set up to about four room. We do have the separation between the guys and the girls and, and that's pretty much taken care of and as well as all the meals too for them. And it's, we knocked it down to a great price for the kids where it's an $18,000 trip. And we are only, with all our fundraising that we have, we knocked it down to a $92 trip per cadet. Fantastic.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Naylor. It's always important to get a mom's perspective too.
Absolutely, well, you've got teenagers, you got, what are you doing?
Well put. Any other questions?
It means no fun if a chaperone, I can tell you.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this matter? Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gresham, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Collins, roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient vote, this matter passes. Bring back the gold as usual.
Yeah.
Thank you, and we will bring back a couple of trophies for Springfield.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Young man, you gave the thumbs up there like we were gonna shoot you down here, we weren't gonna do that. Thank you, young men, young ladies, make us proud. One of the largest, not only in New England, one of the largest in the country, well representative, Central Junior ROTC. Thank you, school committee members. D is to approve Putnam Academy Students Travel to Marlboro, Mass for the Skills USA State Leadership and Skills Conference, April 26th through the 28th, 2018. They always represent us very, very well. Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, this is a group that also has brought back several awards and it's a great experience for the kids. And I'm recommending approval of, of the next two trips, which is for Skills USA. And there's someone here from Putnam, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to ask the same question I asked-
Come on down. We gotta, we have to get the mom's perspective here.
Absolutely.
We appreciate that, School Committee Woman Naylor.
Yes, we do have, I'm not sure how many students per room, I think it's, it's either two or four, but we do have up to eight chaperones. And it's all planned out and everything, so we have plenty of people there and we keep it pretty strict.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on this matter? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Naylor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Attorney Murphy, roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient vote, this matter passes. Thank you. We'll do the deja vu all over again. E is to approve Putnam Academy Students to travel to Louisville, Kentucky for the Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference, June 25th through the 30th, so we're bluegrass country down there, 2018. Superintendent Warwick?
Again, this is a great experience for the kids and has been wonderful in the past. I'm recommending approval.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick, any questions or comments? You already got it in there, but you're more than welcome, Latonya.
Hopefully there will be no more snow days and you'll be out of school.
That's right, that's right, it's June 25th, so.
Say again, any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Naylor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham, roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy? Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient vote, this matter passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
E is to approve the 2018-2019 school calendar. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thanks, Mayor, there's a copy of the calendar in your packet, some of the key features of the calendar, and I think this, this organizational pattern has really worked well for us. Our kids come back to school a week before Labor Day, we get, we get the days in on time. Like this year, even though we've taken six snow days, we're still scheduled to get out June 21st, so the calendar, calendar's been advantageous for us. It keeps the February, April and Christmas vacations intact and allows us to still schedule three professional development days and they're scheduled November 6th, January 11th and March 15th. So as you know, we do four PD days for staff before the students come back and then we do three during the school year for a total of seven PD days. But they're all built into the calendar and if we took five snow days next year, the last day would be June 19th. So as you can see, it allows us to end at a good time. So it's really worked well for us. We've done polling in the past and the, the parents, the teacher groups really favor this, this type of calendar and it's worked well for us, so I'm recommending approval.
Thank you Superintendent Warwick, any questions or comments on the calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Gresham, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Naylor, roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient vote, this matter passes. Thank you very much. G is to approve the submission of Student Learning Time Waiver Application to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You can see the waiver requirement in your package. This is for our Gateway to College program at Springfield Technical Community College. We also won, have one over at Holyoke Community College. This type of waiver is required for all Gateway to College programs in the state because they follow more of a college schedule for the kids and the kids get dual credit. So the difference is they have a waiver from the 990-hour, 180-day requirement. So in, following this program, these students only attend 840 hours of actual class time, seat time, 141 days. But there's a lot of extra work at the college level and this Gateway to College program has been a great benefit for our kids. Not only are they getting, they're getting the dual credit, they're getting high school credit and college credit, so it's really worked well. So every Gateway to College program in the Commonwealth has to put this waiver in, so it's, you know, something we just put in with DESI every year, but it's, it's the right thing for the kids, so I'm recommending approval of the waiver.
Thank you very much Superintendent Warwick, any questions or comments pertaining to this matter? Ms. Gresham, yes.
This particular item went through program and curriculum-
Curriculum programs, thank you, Barb.
We had a very good discussion and we were all in favor of bringing it to the full committee for approval.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Again, a lot of the nuts and bolts work gets done at the subcommittee and I thank all the school committee members that spend hours on these meetings.
That's a real good point, Mayor. I think in the school committee, most of our work, 90% of our work is actually done in subcommittees. And so you'll see us moving items through, they've been debated and discussed at school, in the subcommittee format at length, so sometimes when it seems like they're passing through here quickly, there's been a lot of debate and discussion on them, and that's a great point, thank you.
And may I say something as well? This is a really wonderful program that really shows the diversity of what we're doing as a district in trying to reach students who are not able to learn in a traditional fashion due to things that may or may not be under their control. So I really am very supportive, as Ms. Gresham said, in the committee, we went through this very thoroughly and are really happy to see that we're continuing this, so.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Vice Chair Collins?
Just a point of information, Mr. Mayor, they are open to the public, so even though we're doing our work in subcommittees, we're not doing it behind closed doors. Those are public meetings.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Naylor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham, roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Attorney Murphy?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient vote, this matter passes. Thank you very much. We're gonna now move to A to recognize, is it Kyla, Kyla, am I correct? That's right. Kyla Hill, very proud of you. Kyla Hill for her accomplishments in, in track, Central High, not only a champion of local, but champion regionally in New England and moving on to the nationals, Superintendent Warwick indicates she's a scholar athlete. And who knows, maybe the Olympics awaits for you, but we are so proud of you and we wanted to make sure that we acknowledge you before our public and I hope you receive some of the letters I sent you there with some of the clips you have there too, where you are a testament of the good, the much good we have in our school system here and we want to make sure we highlight that. So Superintendent Warwick and Ms. Hill and your families here too, if you want to come up to the podium, please.
Just, if you want to sprint up to the podium, sprint up, yeah. Yeah, just, you know, besides winning at the state level, national level, great point average is 3.57, so we're always so excited about our student athletes getting great grades as well. So we're really proud of her. We're concluding our winter season, we're gonna be bringing a lot of Western Mass champions to you and everything else. And when I talk to the different principals and the different teachers and coaches, the first thing they bring, bring up to me are the colleges kids are going on to, their grade point averages, so really, really proud of student athletes like Kyla, so. Want to hear from Kyla now.
Before you start, I know there's some school committee members that like to say a few things and maybe you can introduce your family that's with you, because that's very, very important too. Could they, could you introduce them here?
Oh, yes, that's my mom.
He wants to get introduced right there. Mom, thank you.
And that's my brother. Oh, yeah.
You got moxie, kid. We like that.
And that's my dad. And then I brought a few friends, so.
Thank you so much. Just wanted to open up to School Committee members if you might have some comments you'd like to make.
Absolutely. So I am a Central Eagle. So just like Mayor is so happy about being a Commerce Raider, I am a proud Central Eagle. So congratulations. I love to see all of our students doing well, but especially our Central Eagles. So thank you for continuing to represent us well, and good luck in everything that you do, all your endeavors, and know that you have a whole city of people rooting for you, and we know that you're going to do well. And so thank you to your family as well for your support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other members?
We know you're going to do well. Now, are you making this little guy chase you around the track so that he can, if he's taking the bows, we hope he's taking the exercise with you as well.
Yes.
Good luck, and I'm sure you're going to do very, very well, not only in track, but I'm sure when you go on to higher education, you'll be just as successful. And you do make all of us very proud.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Gresham?
I just want to piggyback on the other members. Congratulations, and I know you'll do well.
Thank you.
Any other members? Okay, Kyla, you're a role model.
Yes.
And beautiful, intelligent, talented, and fast. And that's extremely important. And I want to thank your family, too. They laid that foundation there. But you are a role model, because many a times in this age of reality TV, which I know you young kids love, but I can't stand because it highlights the negativity of society, especially our young people. And that's why I send you those little letters that people are watching, whether young or old. And Superintendent and the School Committee felt it was very, very important to have you before the public, to show how you're excelling not only on the track, but in the classroom, too. And you continue to prove that a zip code, a zip code is going to not dictate your future. You're going to dictate your future. So we are so, so proud. You can clap. Okay, that's okay. I'm going to bring you along with me. We are so, so proud of you. And I know with the New England's and now the Nationals and Regionals there, could you, before we give you, we want to get a few words from you. But when is, when are you up now for the, I know you're doing something with the Nationals, too?
I went to Nationals this past weekend in New York.
How'd you do?
Um, I did okay. I mean, I didn't do as well as I had hoped, but I also went in knowing that these girls practice all year round, and they are just insane, so.
You did pretty well. Don't sell yourself short.
They don't have a 3.57 GPA, so.
That's true.
We'd love to hear some from you, if you'd like, before we have a citation for you, if you'd like. Or bring your brother up. I know he'll say something.
Well, I just think that my switch to coming to a Springfield school has helped me a lot this season. I got to build relationships with people on the team. I really enjoyed my time. I did way better than I had expected, and I think it might be because I was just in an environment that I can enjoy more and excel in, so.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Boy, you're faster to want to sit down, too. Springfield Public Schools, Springfield, Massachusetts. The Springfield School Committee and Superintendent's schools hereby recognize Kyla Hill for her many athletic accomplishments, including winning the Massachusetts State Track Coaches Association Invitational, the Pioneer Valley Inter-Scholastic Athletic Competition Championship, the Division One Massachusetts State Championship, the Massachusetts All-State Championship, the New England Championship in the 55-meter dash, and finishing the season undefeated. This is presented on the 15th day of March 2018, signed by myself, Superintendent Warwick, and all our School Committee members. We are so, so proud of you. Come on down.
I am very proud of you. Congratulations.
Is this your agent right here? He's got moxie. I like that. Thank you, Mom and Dad.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was beautiful, wonderful. Thank you, Superintendent Warwick and School Committee members. That was important that we do that, and very heartwarming. We'll now move to B, the United Way. See, Jim Ayers is here and the rest of his team, and I know Ms. Naylor is near and dear to her heart. Presentation to STEM Middle Academy for the highest staff participation in the 2018 Workplace Giving Campaign. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm going to turn this one over to Azelle. Azelle came up with some neat ideas to increase the giving, so I'd like her to go.
Thank you very much. Kyla Hill is a tough act to follow, but we have some more great news to share. Good evening, everyone. As you know, every year, the district participates in the United Way Annual Giving Campaign. And we've done so for many years because the United Way has been such a great partner with Springfield Public Schools. Education is a real big focus of theirs. They've invested over $2 million in education initiatives throughout the region. And here in Springfield, at Springfield Public Schools, we've benefited from their partnership in stay-in-school, stuff the bus. They also give our students an opportunity to give back with their initiatives like Youth Generate and the Day of Caring. And so this year, we became a little inventive with the Giving Campaign for Springfield Public Schools, and United Way came up with some incentives. One of them was to recognize the school that has the highest participation of giving. Giving is completely voluntary. If you want to give as a staff member, you can, and if you don't want to, that's fine also. But I am here today, and I'm joined by Jim Ayers, who I'll ask to come forward, who is the Executive Director for United Way, and he'll take it from here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. And before talking about the United Way, I just wanted to take a moment to do some recognition. This is going to sound familiar, Dan, because we had a similar conversation this morning. But I think some huge thanks and congratulations are in order to the Springfield Public Schools, to the School Committee, to the Superintendent, and to the Mayor as the Chair of the School Committee for the tremendous turnaround in graduation rates. 20%. A 20% increase since 2012 is just phenomenal, and we know that the ripple effect of that benefits everyone in the community. And we just want to recognize the time, the resources, the political capital that's gone into that. We're proud. The United Way is about working in partnership, and Azelle talked about a lot of the ways where we've done that, and we've been very happy to work side by side to support the work of the Springfield Public Schools. And in turn, it's been wonderful to have the staff, the administration, the teachers of the Springfield Public Schools step up year after year to help us with the United Way and our work of giving back to the community and creating opportunity. And we're excited that the Springfield School staff alone raised over $5,000 for the United Way towards our $2.2 million goal this year. And as Azelle said, we had this idea of having a trophy this year to recognize the school building that stepped up at the highest level. And I have to give some credit to central administration, which stepped up with a high-dollar amount. But STEM Academy, 45%, over 45% of the staff stepped forward to make a gift. And as we know, these are people who already give to the community every single day, already give to our children every single day, yet stepped up in one more way to share a piece and create opportunity for kids throughout our city and throughout the region. So we want to say thank you, and we want to give a trophy to STEM Academy for their work. Is the principal here?
Yeah. There he is.
So I want to say thank you to the principal, Luis Martinez. Also, by leading by example, this isn't just the staff, but he stepped up as well, and thank you to your team. And here's a trophy to display.
Principal Martinez, would you like to say a couple of words?
Absolutely.
Spoken like a true non-politician there.
Absolutely, yeah. Sense of pride, 98. Woo! No, I just want to thank our STEM family, and especially Lender and Case, which is one of our social studies teachers. She created flyers, she emailed our staff, she reminded us every single day to donate. And she's the reason why a lot of our staff ended up donating. So that's a shared leadership that we always try to promote within our staff and building leaders along the way. So thank you so much. And all to the SBS educators, $5,000 is amazing. I know we can do it better next year, so we'll just keep bringing those numbers up.
Thank you. Excellent. Thank you, Principal Martinez, and thank you, United Way, for what you continue to do day in and day out for our community. C, we're now going to get a report on the graduation and dropout report, and I'm going to make a statement right now. I take offense to some of the terms that is being used for "school the pipeline" by some individuals that are out there. Since my administration has taken over, especially with Superintendent Warwick, time in my administration, a decade ago, we had a 53% graduation rate. We are now at 76%. We've dropped dropout rates with the whole team effect, including teachers, to 4% or 5%. Our scores are exceeding that of the state average level tremendously. We do not say no to anyone. We take anyone. So for some individuals or activists to throw out the "school the pipeline" is quite disrespectful to the teachers and the administration of the Springfield School Department and the School Committee and the leadership, Superintendent Warwick. We don't paint a panacea. We always strive to do more and do better. But these false edicts that are being put out to grab headlines are undeserved. We will continue to work together, but I take offense. I take offense. We have a tremendous amount of good kids of all creed, colors, and backgrounds moving on to colleges and to careers. And our teachers have worked hard, as with our administrators. Look at the facts, not the soundbites. So I don't want to hear again, "prison the pipeline." Springfield is being looked upon not only throughout the Western Mass area, the state and nationally for what we do. We're not going to rest on our laurels. We're going to continue to work hard, and I think that's a testament, not only to the teachers, but some of the courageous moves and policy moves that the School Committee has made during the last 10 years on some controversial subjects, which we went on the facts of proving out. So I don't want to hear again, "prison the pipeline." I don't want to hear it. It is disrespectful to the educators of the Springfield Public School System. And if you're going to stand with those people when they make those type of comments, it is uncalled for. If there's an issue, we'll work together to resolve it as one, not to the detriment of the system. No more prison the pipeline. Look at the facts, and look what our teachers and administrators do. Thank you very much. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a good news report for the city of Springfield. While we're not where we want to be, we certainly have made significant gains since 2012. In fact, since 2012, we've had the largest improvement in the graduation rate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Largest decrease in the dropout rate, cutting it in half in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
These are students that start in the ninth grade, right?
Right.
So that's important.
That's a very, very good point, Ms. Gresham. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara. So I think the four-year cohort graduation rate is a tricky term, like Barbara said. So there's a definition up there for you now. These are the percent of students who start in ninth grade and actually graduate on time in four years with that cohort. They don't move out of Massachusetts. They actually finish with that cohort. So that's the four-year cohort graduation rate. There's also a five-year cohort rate, and that's a different data point. Our improvement there has been very, very positive also. Whereas the annual dropout rate is a one-year statistic of just the students who drop out at any grade during that school year. So it takes the state a while to track everything because they have to check records from across the Commonwealth and everything. So we just got this information in January, and this is the first School Committee meeting we've had to report it. So I want to walk through it now, and I think what you're going to be very, very proud of is that not only those great aggregate improvements that we talked about, the improvements were significantly achieved by all of our different subgroups. I think most noteworthy is our ELL subgroup, our English Language Learners, improved 30% during that timeframe. And all of our other subgroups, our African-American, Hispanic subgroup. So this has been achieved by all, and it's a very, very encouraging statistic. So following through on Slide 3, you can see overall, that in '12, our graduation rate was 56.6. Now it's 76.9. Looking at each school, you can follow through. Central is now over 91.4%. So Latonya is going to be happy with that one.
Yes.
Putnam, starting at 71.1, 95.3%.
Shep is very proud of that.
Really good.
Principal Johnson.
Yeah, tremendous. Renaissance, 78.9, up to 94.3. SciTech, while we're not where we want to be right now, at 76.9, started at 39.9. The rate of growth is just absolutely incredible. That's just absolutely incredible. Alternatives are always going to be lower because kids who go to alternative programs are going to take more than four years typically to finish because they've already fallen behind. But I would say to Rhonda and the team at the alternative programs, all of these kids are high-risk kids that they've taken in, they're undercredited, and they've just made tremendous gains, and her and her team has absolutely done a fabulous job in that arena. So Rhonda's over here.
Superintendent Warwick, can I just point out, too, with the alternative school system opportunities we have, unlike other surrounding areas, which do not do that, and let me clarify that, they do not do that. And that child is put on the street. We don't give up on a child. As a matter of fact, when it was controversial at the time, the drug and alcohol high school we have, which we take from students from surrounding areas because we believe and feel that we can save some of these students. So there's plenty of options that are being put forth by the Springfield Public School System to try to teach and reach these kids, sometimes in an unorthodox way of tough love to make sure that they can move forward. But these things need to be pointed out, because I'm sick and tired of the slings and arrows that keep being thrown at the Springfield Public School System. When I just tell them, oh, that's you, Mr. Mayor, saying that, I say, look at the facts. Look at the facts. Ms. Gresham?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we have to look at positiveness. And looking at the alternative school, they've steadily went up. They're steadily gaining, and that's good. In our last School Committee meeting we had, we had two students from the alternative high school that was at the speak-out, and they did very well with speaking, very well. So I'm proud of them.
Yeah, I am, too. And actually, it's my favorite graduation every year when we go to their graduation, because some of the stories and some of the adversities that they've overcome are, you know, just really remarkable, given the challenges they faced. On Page 4, you're going to see the different subgroups of male and female. You see the trajectory going in the right direction. Our ELL subgroup up over 30%, so that's really positive. Students with disability up significantly. Low-income students up almost to our average. And high-needs students, students with ELL, special education needs, that group has gone from 54.8 to 75.7. So again, the gains have been experienced across all of our subgroups, and I'm particularly proud of that. As you can go to the next slide, Slide 5, you can see some of the different demographic groups. Our African-American group started at 64.9. Now they're at 85% higher than the aggregate. Our Asian subgroup's gone up considerably. Hispanic-Latino, from 48.1% to 72.1. And our white subgroup is also up to 82.6. So again, the gains have been experienced across all of the subgroups, and some of the most significant gains are among some of the minority subgroups. Slide 6 has some interesting facts. It shows the poverty rates under the new Poverty Index in Massachusetts. So it shows Springfield compared to Fall River, Holyoke, Lawrence, New Bedford, Southbridge, and then the state average, only at 32%. As you can see, our average is 77.1%. With Holyoke, we're the highest poverty districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And usually, these kinds of statistics follow the poverty rates very closely. So you can, on the next slide, we're going to show you how we compare to those communities and some of the gains we've made. So you can see Springfield's gain over the years and where we're at, and our rate of gain is better than all of these other school districts, even though the poverty rates aren't as high as ours, other than Holyoke. So very, very encouraging when you're comparing us to these high-poverty subgroups that you[1760.29] experience in the urban centers. And again, we had, again, the best rate of gain. The next slide, slide eight, shows you our rate of gain as compared to these others. So not only where we stand, but the rate of gain. And see, Springfield's twenty percent gain is the highest among all the urban centers, the high-poverty urban centers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Slide nine has the dropout rate data. You can see that we started in 2012 with ten percent. It's down to five point one percent. And again, when you look at all the schools, the schools have all improved in that arena. So it's a very positive data point from the start. And again, not for what it was in 2012. Looking at the subgroup data, you can see that in all the subgroups, it's improved. The ELL or LEP subgroup is down from fourteen point four percent to seven point six. Students with disabilities, thirteen point seven to eight point four. Follow through the high-needs population, it's a combination of ELL, poverty, and special needs, way down. So overall, the trajectory is going in the right direction in the subgroups. On the next slide, slide eleven, you can see the African-American black subgroup down from eight point five to three point six. Hispanic-Latino, down almost in half, eleven point four to six point one. And the white subgroup is also down, nine point two to four point one. So again, the decrease is very, very positive and experienced by all of our subgroups, which is really important to us. Next slide has the data by grade level, and you can see the district and then comparing it to each grade level. You can see that we've had improvement at every grade level. Our biggest challenge continues to be in the ninth grade, but it's decreased significantly over the years. And again, I think that's a credit to our wonderful principals, our staff in the schools, and some really good programs that we were able to put into place. Again, following through, number of dropouts. We show the actual numbers on the slide. So we started with six seventy-two. We're down to three fifty-six. And then the reduction in numbers in all the subgroups, and those are just the overall numbers in every subgroup. But again, nice improvement across every arena. I think that the staff has worked extremely hard in the schools, principals, teachers, counselors. And our team at Central Office has worked very hard to put a lot of proactive programs in place to help with this, you know, when there are many programs in place. But it's just been very gratifying, and I'm most gratified about the improvements in the various subgroups. Dr. Yolanda Johnson, I asked her to come down tonight to talk about some of the programs, creative programs that we put in place over the last five, six years that I think have made a tremendous difference. Yolanda's led our efforts in this endeavor and has been with it since the start. So I thought she could talk about a few of the programs because I think there's been some great creative programs put in place that have made a big difference for our kids.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson.
We really, as you can see from the data, from the data, we've made some great gains. And there's still a lot of work to do, but there is a lot to be proud of. We started back in the, oh, boy, was it the spring of 2010, working with the academic department at the time. And we started online credit recovery because we really needed to expand the supports we were providing to students. And we evolved from that to really looking at, and online credit recovery is just a digital platform to allow students flexibility in how they take courses, whether it's during the school day or after school or during Saturday school. And then another thing we did, as we looked at digital learning, we expanded our, really looked at expanding our extended learning time, which is our night school, summer school, Saturday school, to provide students with a variety of ways to earn credit towards graduation. And then back in the 2012-2013 school year, we started the high school completion program that is housed on the campus of our alternative schools under the leadership of Ms. Rhonda Jacobs. And the site administrator is Jen McQuade, and we have been so fortunate to have Ms. McQuade and Mrs. Jacobs as a part of that team because in 2012-2013, we graduated about twelve students through high school completion. And it's just a program to reengage our students that are either on the verge of dropping out of school or have dropped out. In this past school year, with the class of 2017, we graduated over sixty-seven, about sixty-seven students. So that in itself really was a way for us to really be innovative in how we were thinking about working with our students with the most needs and really trying to have a place where we could have them be in a learning environment to really meet the needs of the whole child. And so whether they're at the high school completion program or in their schools, we were really working with students based on the data that we received, student by student. And we can see what their needs are, their past history in school academically and around school engagement, i.e. suspension rates, to make sure that, and attendance, to make sure that we are addressing their needs. And there are more opportunities for our students with teacher-led instruction because while digital learning and an online platform is great, our students really need the support of our teachers, and we have always been appreciative of that. This school year, we started our partnership with Job Corps, which is an opportunity for our students who are at all of our high schools, but most importantly, our alternative school students, to be duly enrolled in Springfield Public Schools and take a CTE courses at Job Corps. So they'll graduate with a high school diploma and a CTE credential, career tech ed credential. So we're really proud of those accomplishments. We currently have eight students, and we are working on having additional students participate in that. So I just, as I close, I always thank our superintendent because this was such arduous work to be able to narrow that gap. And we have a lot more work to do, but the leadership has been so consistent and so supportive. And financially, we no longer have the grant we used to have, but he's been so committed to making sure that we have the funds needed to continue to improve our graduation and dropout strategies.
Thank you, Yolanda. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any questions of Yolanda at all? Superintendent Warwick?
No, I just think it's a, you know, credit to the team at Central Office, but also our wonderful teachers, counselors, paraprofessionals, administrators in the school. It's been a full-court press by everybody. And I think the teams over at the alternative schools that do some of the hardest work we have, day in and day out, and sometimes produce miracles, and just great work. We have nine alternative schools that we support, but it gets a lot of kids through school. And I was really thrilled with the development of bringing the partnership with Job Corps this year. So not only are they getting the academics in a small-group setting and the support they need, but also pursue the career piece with the Job Corps. So that was a very positive development. I thank Yolanda and Rhonda for their work on that, but it's made a big difference. We have more work to do. We're going to keep at it, but we're clearly moving in the right direction. I'm really proud of our staff.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Chair Collins.
Stats will love this. It's an interesting anomaly that seventy-seven point one or seventy-seven percent of our students come from an economically disadvantaged household. And basically, that exact same percentage, seventy-six point nine, which is seventy-seven, are coming out of our schools with a diploma. So I would have to say that we indeed do have a pipeline in Springfield. But when our students come out of the end of that pipeline, they come out with the ability and the skills to break that cycle of poverty. And that is a good thing that we should all be proud of.
Well put, Vice Chair Collins. Any other questions or comments on this matter? Hearing none, we're going to move to...
Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I would just like to, again, congratulate the staff and school committee members, as well as Dr. Johnson, on all the work that they are doing. It's really noticeable, and it's not just the alternative programs, but a lot of the other collaborations that are happening in the community and a lot of the willingness of the staff, Paul, and just all these different ones that are just really out there trying to figure out how do we work together to continue to help our children. So thank you so much for everything that you are doing and continue to let us know if there's anything else that we can do to support you.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we're going to move to the Early Childhood Education Report. And I know that we have our school officials here. I know Sally Fuller's here from the Davis Foundation. And I want to say, some ten years ago, we took over, I went, I was invited to your Early Childhood Education Event at the Basketball Hall of Fame, where you brought in a prominent speaker. And the old line of pay me now or pay me later, and how if money is pumped in on the early and very, very early, the positive percentage increase was thirty-eight or forty-two percent. But if you pumped it in at the tail end, it flatlined or dived. I heard you loud and clear, and so did the school department and the superintendent and the school committee. And we're being noted now in the state and in the country with what we're doing for early education. And I have to say this because, again, I take offense to some of the things that are being said by advocates that are misinformed on it. But the Early Childhood Education Center that we put forth, that's a public-private collaboration, never been done before. Barbara Gresham's crew head-started as part of that. The city, the city bought the property, invested in that. Twenty-five percent is public. The other seventy-five percent is private. And when you run into those parents, those grandparents, those family members that said, "Thank you, because my grandchild or my child could not, was in a waiting list," and we put together, I think, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight slots there, which helps those families go to work, provide for themselves, provide for those kids, and provide for the community. So if something's wrong, whether on the city side or school side, bring it to our attention, and we'll work damn hard to correct it. But I'm getting sick and tired, whether from the city side or the school side, to throw slings and arrows at us when you don't look at the facts. We don't mind constructive criticism. So as Barbara, School Committee Woman Gresham said, "We're going to talk about the positive. We'll conquer the challenges." But for people to make their point on misinformation just to grab, I got to watch my language out, just to grab a headline, to grab a headline, and for others that stand with those individuals is showing disrespect to our teachers. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we have...
Before you go, Mr. Superintendent, if you don't mind, just, I want to follow up a little bit on the mayor. He mentioned very quickly that the city bought that building. The city has paid for innumerable buildings for our students. There, you are a mayor that puts his money where his mouth is. You come up with money to help the children of this city because in your heart, you believe in every one of them. And there probably is not another mayor in the country that puts as much money where his mouth is. So you've got a right to be angry when people say things because you make the hard stands and the tough financial decisions to support what's good in this city.
Thank you, Chris. We've got a whole team. Thank you.
Yeah, we're very fortunate here to have a very supportive mayor and a very supportive school committee. We've doubled the numbers of youngsters in our public preschool programs. But this effort from the beginning, and Sally's here from the Davis Foundation, has been a community effort. We have the Davis Foundation involved. We have our private providers. We have Head Start. And we've been collaborating and working together on this effort. And the best things that happen, it's when teams come together and actually collaborate. And I think everyone's just done a great job in this area. I think having great data allows you to make really good decisions and tells you where you want to put your resources. This report you're going to see today is a really good piece of data to reflect as we're making strategic decisions. I think that, again, the community's been great. I think when we bought the Early Childhood Center, we were able to put the PEG program in place and actually expand our preschools. I went down, I took a look at the preschool center, I called the mayor that day. He called Paul Foster into his office. I think Paul shakes every time he hears me calling on the phone. But that day, the mayor came up with the money for the Early Childhood Center.
Forty-five minutes, we put that deal together.
Right, right. Unbelievable.
Forty-five minutes. Laura Karen, and Danny mentioned, you know, I forgot to mention all our partners. We have the Head Start, we have the Y, we have Square One.
It's a team effort. And there's a lot of work that's been done. We've come up with a common curriculum, and Laura, my director in literacy, has led that effort to put a good, great curriculum together that all of our partners are using. So all of our Springfield kids, whether they're in private or public preschool, are benefiting from that, the coaching and the support. Because it's not just providing an early childhood program, it's providing a quality early childhood program that gets the outcomes we need to get for our kids so we can graduate all of them. So I think this report is something that, when I saw, I wanted to bring it to school committee so you could take a good look at the data. But again, I want to thank everyone for their piece on this. I have a great team with Laura who's put countless hours into this, and the community side, as well as our side, working on all the curriculum areas, our coaches, all the great curriculum pieces that have been developed. And then, more importantly, the support to implement it well in those classrooms for our kids. So Laura's going to go through the report and walk you through it, and then we'll answer any questions.
Can I just point out too, we do the wraparound services. We work very closely with the United Way and the Pats Bradley and our parent information center. So not only serving the whole child, we help and Head Start and other, but the whole family, the whole family, whether the housing component, whether it's a financial, how you manage your finances, whether it's a health component, it's all there. Now, do we get to everyone? Sometimes we don't. But we're damn hard, we're trying to, if people want to succeed, no matter what creed color and background, the opportunity is here for you to do that. I'm going to get off my soapbox now, but...
I think you took all my comments, gentlemen.
We have to hit that.
Well, really, first and foremost, though, you two have said this. Thank you both so much, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick. You really are champions of this work, as well as so many in this room, on our team, and Sally, of course. It is the great equalizer, early education. And so this data talks a little bit about readiness. So we're going to look at a piece of data tonight, and you have the slides in your folder that is from our kindergarten literacy assessment. But before I go into that with you, kindergarten readiness is not just comprised of literacy. And this endeavor that we've taken with the Campaign for Grade Level Reading through our school readiness work group, through our preschool expansion grant, and through the coaching that we have happening in our public school pre-Ks and kindergartens, isn't just about literacy. It's about social-emotional learning. It's about a comprehensive curriculum that really addresses the whole child. And literacy can't happen without all those other pieces. So I just wanted to be really clear that we're looking at data that's going to call out literacy or reading, pre-reading skills, early literacy skills, but readiness really encompasses so much more. So we ask ourselves a few questions when we started looking at our KLA, which is short for kindergarten literacy assessment. It was formerly called the KRA, the kindergarten reading assessment. We've revised it a few times over the years to meet our needs as we learned more about child development and really what were the determining indicators for readiness and what children needed as they proceeded through kindergarten, moving into first grade. So we ask a couple of questions here. What extent are children coming to kindergarten ready? Is there a relationship between the preschool experience and literacy skills in kindergarten? We also looked at, well, we looked at the results of this assessment to make that determination. And we looked at a really strong sample of children that are currently in kindergarten. It's a critical mass. Uh-oh. What'd I do?
Stats, where are you?
All right, we're good.
Stats team was a big part of putting this report together. They did a great job with our...
Paul's got an analyst on the team that just did some phenomenal work, listening to me, a couple of our coaches, Kate Asher, who revised our kindergarten literacy assessment, and really listened to what we were trying to find out. So, looking at this slide, we're using this tool formatively with teachers, but we're also using this tool to make some internal decisions about program quality, whether it be with the preschool expansion grant classrooms, whether it be with our own SPS pre-Ks and kindergartens, whether it be with the Funder Collaborative-sponsored preschools that are out there. They purchased the Common Curriculum last year. So this data really reflects children who were in year two of the preschool expansion grant, children who were in year one of the Funder Collaborative, and children in our SPS pre-K whose educators were probably in year two or three of the implementation of that curriculum. And also, implementation of the Massachusetts Reading Corps in many of those classrooms. So there were a lot of variables that go into place that determine whether or not a child's coming to kindergarten. is high-quality. We address letter knowledge, phonological awareness, concepts of print, consonant sounds, and oral language, and word identification. Word identification's not included in the entry-level piece of this data. We've gone through and looked at what items in the first five areas are entry-level areas. So we're really reporting on not the whole test, we're reporting on certain items we know children should have in place to be considered kindergarten-ready in a literacy mindset. Word identification is not an appropriate skill to be addressing at the beginning of What's interesting is we added oral language because we know that oral language is the best determinant of proficiency or meeting expectations at the third-grade reading level. So when we think about MCAS coming down the line, this is really important. We know that children develop as readers and literate human beings through oral language first. And then we, you look and you see, that's, that's a good news story. So we definitely want to see more than half of our kids excelling, but forty percent are coming with stronger oral language skills. So we've got a decent starting point. And when you look at how many English language learners we have in this district, that's encouraging data. We see that almost thirty-eight percent have a strong identification for letters, about thirty percent have a sense of phonological awareness, about twenty-eight percent have concepts of print. That's book handling. That's knowing what an author is, what an illustrator is, where the cover of the book is, how to hold the book. Really simple things, we would think, but perhaps not if books are not easily accessible to children before they get to school. And then also consonant sounds. So that's our weakest area. So we use this information, and we know that we need to help teachers, help students early on in those areas. And then we look at the overall score. And the overall score was determined by how many of our kindergarteners met expectations on all of those areas. That's the urgent cry for us there when we see, wow, only seven percent come to kindergarten really having strong early literacy skills wrapped up in one bundle. So that's where our work is. We've looked at how we break this down. So when we look at our SPS pre-Ks, which are largely the half-day model, largely an integrated model, serving a high special education population, we see that almost sixty percent are scoring fairly well on this exam, this assessment. If you're coming from a center-based, it's about fifty percent. If you're coming from family childcare, less than forty. And then with no preschool experience, thirty percent. So we, we have a finding. We're saying that children who are getting this high-quality experience in Springfield public schools are doing better. We know we still have work to do. That number is not good enough until it's closer to a hundred percent. When we look at this data across the board, we can see how we compare in the specific As you can see, in most areas, the public schools are doing a little bit better. And stop me with any questions along the way.
I have a question.
Should I go back a slide, or?
Snaylor.
Yes. I was going to wait till you were done since you prompted me. So when you talk about language--
Yes.
--on slide, a couple of slides back, or one slide back, and we're talking about language there, and these children are being assessed by their ability to speak English, or is it just language overall?
It's English. The exam is in, the assessment is in English. So I mean, there's certain things that we would say formatively, we need to know about children, and that they need supports. Obviously, we're going to give them those supports. And we have our English Language Learners Program, and we do get in there, and educators sometimes are able to converse in that child's language. So we definitely make some modifications along the way, but for the purpose of this exam, it is English.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snaylor.
It's a great question, because we do have a significant population who come to us with little to no English, especially in the early grades. What the key is, is that we're getting them in the early grades, and we're closing those language gaps quickly as opposed to later. So this is an interesting slide that really speaks to the efforts in the community when you, in this campaign for grade-level reading, that's really, you know, targeted on moving the needle on literacy outcomes across the board, across all grade levels. We see that our preschool expansion grant classrooms, known as PEG, did fairly well on this exam compared to perhaps others in the Funder Collaborative or other center-based The Funder Collaborative classroom, it's a pretty small sample, so we want to say that perhaps it's not quite a significant finding. It was the first year that they were involved in this alignment, those classrooms in the community. But yes, they are in our schools, so we're impressed by that showing, even if that's a small number. So we've come to a few conclusions. We have more work to do. We're going to dig in deeper as the year goes on. We'll have this exam, this assessment at the end of the year. And we're going to look to see if children are, where the children are and where they came from, who are performing even better by the end of the year. We'll be counting all items on the assessment for the end of the year, not just those, we say, our entry-level assessment items. We know that children with no preschool experience are entering the most behind. So that's a community question we have to grapple with. What do we do? What do we do as the Campaign for Grade Level Reading collaborates with the School Readiness Work Group and people who are putting programming together at Head Start, Square One, the Y, other partners that aren't necessarily involved in that grant? How do we come together and get everyone on board so that it's not just those that we see every day in this work? And, I mean, I think the mayor, you said it well. I mean, this is the Great Equalizer preschool. We know that if children are having a high-quality experience, we're going to see that translate through the grades. They're going to be on grade-level reading by third grade, and that's really our goal here in the literacy department.
Now, Laura, you and your team have done a great job. Listen, I know firsthand, you had my kids at Frederick Harris.
I did have one of your daughters.
But Superintendent Warwick on that. But there's more that we need to do. But that, again, that Davis Foundation speaker that you brought in ten years ago really, really hit home, and that's what we're pursuing. We're also joined by my friend and colleague, City Councilman Jesse Letterman. Thank you for being here tonight. But I'll open it up now to Superintendent Warwick and school committee members, if you have any other questions. But Laura, to you and the whole team, Davis, Sally, the Davis Foundation, we really--
I just say something about Ms. Sally, and it was cherish every child, I think--
Yep.
--ten, twelve years ago.
Right.
And I remember watching as a teacher from home, the school committee meeting. I was one of those people who do that.
Thank you for watching.
And I didn't know Sally at the time. I said, "Who is she? She speaks my language." And she's right on. And amazing how our paths have crossed, and the work is great. It's very fulfilling, but we have lots of work to do still.
But it's always good, I think, to start with data, analyze the data so we can make good decisions around the data. It's clear that most of our kids are entering kindergarten. And as in all high-poverty urban centers, way behind. So we've got to try to find out how to engage the entire community and the state to provide the kind of supports at an early age so our kids can actually enter kindergarten on level so they're not playing from behind their whole career, because we know what that leads to. And it shows when you provide a quality preschool experience, it makes a difference. You see the PEG results were very good. That was a full day, full year, quality experience. Our, very proud of our preschool program. It's a half-day model. We only get about three or four thousand dollars per student to run that model. But you could see the kids made gains. We need to do more, but we're clearly moving in the right direction. But I think the piece on quality and all of us working together, Laura's leadership in that endeavor, so that we improve the quality of the preschool programs, because you saw kids without preschool are coming from some programs that don't produce the kind of quality literacy outcomes. It has an impact, and it puts kids, puts kids behind, and it creates those high-risk students who often drop out from school. So somewhere, something we have to continue to do is strategically analyze the data and continue to work together to see what kind of experiences we can provide for our kids. But this data, I thought, was very illuminating.
Any questions or comments, Superintendent, or Ms. Karen? Vice Chair Collins?
We, it's a great report, and it shows us some very good things, and it gives us the kind of data we need. It is an auspicious start to a, to a new, but we believe, as you, that this is the beginning of the journey, not the end.
That's right.
This is, this is, we go on from here.
That's absolutely right.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. Ms. Gresham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Very good presentation. And I know that with kindergarten readiness, it focuses on the whole child.
That's right.
The whole child, the whole development of the child. And we all know that a quality early education is key.
Huge.
A child will succeed if they've had that early education experience. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Any other--
May I ask one more question?
Yes, Ms. Snaylor.
So, beautiful presentation. I appreciate all the information, as the other members do as well. My question would be around special education and ELL, as we talked about. Understanding that we're talking about overall numbers, I'd be very intrigued to find out what that looks like when you start to break it down into those two subgroups. Because as we keep strategizing about different ways to assist and support what you're doing, I think that would be a way for us to get another angle at what is happening as these kids are coming in and what their preparation levels are.
I think we could certainly do that. I think we can make some inferencing around that SPS data--
Yes.
--because that SBS data really encompasses children who were in a special education program. So the high percentages of kids with IEPs came out of the SPS pre-K program. So that's a good news story there. We know we're doing some good things around special education in our preschools.
Yeah, fifty percent of the kids in that data are special-needs students. Many of them have ELL needs also, but fifty percent are special-needs students. We know from research that early intervention for special-needs youngsters is an essential component, and that, that's what precipitated creating that program with fifty percent home models and fifty percent special needs.
Thank you.
But I would say, as we analyze the year-end data, we could probably pull out the special ed and ELL numbers.
Thank you.
Would be important for all of us. It's a good point.
Thank you, Ms. Snaylor. You're always having, welcome addition with your insightful questions. And the mom's side, too. And your United Way hat.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the early education? Ms. Karen? Okay.
I'm not Ms. Karen anymore.
Yeah, I know.
I haven't been for--
I know, I know, but I'm still here.
--six, seven years, and my husband might be watching from home.
I know.
Very upset with you.
To Laura's husband, I mean no, you know. Maybe I'm having flashbacks of the both Frederick Harris days, but to you--
Rements to you.
We needed a little levity tonight, so that was good. To you and the, the rest of your team, and to--
Thank you.
--the private sector and philanthropic sector, Davis Foundation, the, the Y, Square One, Head Start, everybody, thank you for what you're doing, because it is making a difference. So, thank you. Thanks, Laura. Okay. Any other questions or comments on early childhood education report? Hearing none. We're going to move to reports of student committee, student relations, parent concerns?
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Buildings and Maintenance Committee.
No report.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. C Legislative and Contracts Committee. I believe the individual's absent on that. D Curriculum and Programs Committee.
We went to, we talked about--
Ms. Gresham already reported out on, appreciate your, I know you guys spent more than a few hours on that.
Yes.
Budget and Finance Committee, Vice Chair Collins.
I'll let Attorney Murphy give the report, since, since I missed my first meeting ever, but I missed that one.
That's unheard of. You missing a budget, finance, Attorney Murphy?
Stand in for Mr. Collins. He was absent.
Did a phenomenal job.
Yeah, it was, it was very informative. We did a great job. We voted on a couple of, accepting a couple of grants, and yeah, Ms. Snaylor was there. And we did, we were starting, as Mr. Collins knows, to look at the budget. The governor's budget has come out, and the schedule for the budget, and the size of the budget. As you know, there's numerous challenges, Mayor, so we're starting to look at that. And we're hoping that, actually, I don't, so on Monday, I don't know if you want to take this over, Mr. Collins, there is a, a public meeting for members of the public to come out and talk about their priorities in the budget. And so we hope that people in Springfield come out, and parents, and, and students, and teachers, and talk about what their priorities are as we design the budget coming up for the next fiscal year.
And Attorney Murphy, thank you very much. It's very, very, very rare that Vice Chair Collins misses Budget and Finance. I believe that meeting Monday, the nineteenth, is at Central High School, sent, the Central High School library, and I believe it's at five-thirty, five-thirty. And we do that all the time, a public session to take testimony.
And if anybody can't make that meeting, and whether you can or not, we encourage you to go on to the website and fill out the questionnaire, because we take a close look at that information, and that's already up on the website, where everybody can, can give their opinions on the budget matters and priorities for the system. If people do not have access to a computer, there are forms available in the different schools, and I think we put some in the library this year.
Attorney Phelps, yes?
I just wanted to say that the budget is also available at the libraries--
At the libraries.
--at the central library and the branches.
Thank you, Attorney Phelps. Any other questions or comments, report on Budget and Finance Committee? Thank you, Attorney Murphy, and Chair, Mr. Collins. Vocational Education Committee.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Ms. Snaylor. G is Technology Committee. I believe that person is absent.
That's, that's me, Mayor.
Oh, that's your, he's not absent. Peter is, Murphy's here. Yeah, okay.
We, we did have a meeting on, on February twenty-eighth of the Technology Committee. Mr. Foster came down and briefed us on the Laptop Take Home Program. You know, as, as you know, Mayor, there's over twelve-hundred students that are currently bringing home laptops, and we're looking to expand that program. And we're talking about, you know, how to pay for that, and also to make sure that our students are, are being responsible with their laptops. And Paul did a great job, and we really want to thank him for, for, for starting this program, which is great for our kids. All of our kids should have a computer at home. So we're, we're hoping to expand that. And we had a nice Technology Committee meeting on February twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Attorney Murphy. That is a great, another great initiative by Superintendent Warwick and the School Committee to get lab, that's our goal, to get all, every kid a laptop to go home. So congrats on that. Any questions or comments on Attorney Murphy's report? Okay, hearing none. School Safety Committee.
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Report to the Superintendent. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. In your package, you're going to find a note from the Community Foundation, talking about a grant that Springfield was part of. It's a grant to improve the diversity of the workforce, and doing that by providing supports to paraprofessionals. It's a, our paraprofessional workforce is always more diverse than the teacher workforce. Teacher workforce, we have a lot of challenges with licensing and candidates coming out of our teacher ed programs. So this piece was a partnership, Springfield was in it, with some other urban centers like Holyoke and, and the colleges, to provide these supports for pairs to work through and become licensed teachers, getting help with a teacher task, getting help with a, with a curriculum, and work on that. So again, the para-workforce. And, and you get people that have actually had a lot of experience in the classroom, so they bring a lot to the table. So we're proud of that initiative and proud to be part of that. You also have a report from Niasse showing Central--
Superintendent, I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the five college, do we know what colleges are involved?
Yeah, it's that whole five college partnership up in Amherst. Amherst, Smith, Mount Holyoke.
And Stick, is Stick involved?
Stick's involved with us in a lot of programs. They're not in, on this one. But they will be involved, because some of the people that are getting supports will start taking their coursework at Stick and Holyoke Community, because it's affordable.
All right. So do we know of any of our paraprofessionals who meet the criteria?
That's what we're, that's what we're working for, is to identify them and then provide the supports. We just got the grant.
All right. Do you know what the criteria is for them, for the paraprofession--
Yeah, we're looking for folks with bachelors first.
The bachelor's?
Well, they don't have to, but--
It makes it easier to--
It's a smaller timeframe to work through. They have a bachelor's, because then we can look at the SQ program from Springfield College as well. So we have a lot of programs to help people through, but, you know, if they have some college credits already, that, that makes it a shorter path.
Shorter path, okay.
So, there's a lot of pathways there, but potential there. We've had a lot of paras come through programs and become teachers, and become successful teachers. A lot of our, a lot of our paras in the special education program especially have gone on to be great special education teachers in the school system. So this provides us with some more support to help with that effort.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham.
Thank you.
And then, uh, the next one is the NEASC report. Central actually received accreditation, and the process is continuing for them, and there's information on that in your packet, but they've met all the criteria that was put forward to keep that NEASC accreditation. The next one is an article on one of our AP English teachers from Central, Diane Mackey, who won a reward. We've been involved with Mass Insight for Education for the last six or seven years, providing more AP courses for our kids. In fact, Central High School has the highest percentage of minority students in the Commonwealth taking AP classes. But Diane, one of, one of the Mass Insight awards, and Mass Insight's been a great partner with us. Another newspaper article about some of our outstanding kids at Central. Hall of Fame honors Central duo. Michaela Thompson has won the Hall of Fame Western Mass Player of the Year from Central High School. We watched it the other night, as they won the Western Mass, and then beat a Central Mass team, and are moving on to the state championship. 3:30 at the Civic Center, or the Mass Mutual Center, on Saturday, they were a great team. And Central also, our boys, Jorge Torres, won the Western Mass Boys Player of the Year, and, which is quite the honor to win both. Central's repeat in Western Mass, boys and girls, that repeat had never been done before. No school had ever repeated with both the boys and girls two years in a row. So that was a great accomplishment, and hopefully the girls will bring back another state championship for us. So, we're still alive there. And the last piece is, we have our contracts report in January and February that we provided for. If you have any questions on those reports, please contact Pateroy. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments, Superintendent Warwick? Okay, hearing none, new business?
Do we have unfinished first?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, yeah, is there any unfinished business?
Yeah, I'd actually like to address something, and that's, Laura mentioned twice when she was speaking about these televised meetings and sitting home and watching them. And people who might have been sitting home and watching this evening, and listening to the speak-out, and watching us sit here and not say anything, might wonder, what's that all about? But it is our policy, in order to optimize the amount of time, to not have back-and-forth interaction, to allow as many speakers the time and the courtesy to speak as possible, even though at times it is extremely difficult, as it was tonight, when we had people insinuate that this school committee, and the school committees prior to this one, don't care about staffing and the number of minority teach, minority staff we have, and to flat-out come in, come out and say that we stick our head in the sand, nothing could be further from the truth. Since the days when Bryant Robinson was named Assistant Superintendent, which is a long time ago, and for the entire decade I've been here, there has been a robust attempt to, to go out and recruit minority staff members to come work for Springfield. It has never been as successful as we'd like it to be. We certainly would love to have a staff that more closely mirrors the population that we educate. We are glad to listen to anyone, we don't have a corner on good ideas. We are glad to accept recommendations from anybody, but I'm not glad or willing to accept insinuation and castigation that this body doesn't care. That's absolutely wrong.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins, and, again, testament to our teachers, no matter what creed, color, or background. 23% increase, and it's a part in graduation, unheard of what we've done on it. So, we just want the best possible teacher. And Superintendent Warwick has put very aggressive recruitment tools, going to the colleges and other advertising all over the place. So, we welcome the best and the brightest, no matter what type of background you have on that. Anything else in unfinished business?
If I could mention something, Mayor. Yeah, I think we put a lot of programs in place. We understand there's a national problem in this arena, with the licensure, and in Massachusetts, it's accentuated by the very, very rigorous MTEL testing program, but we've done a lot as a school system, we've improved our numbers, and we've done a lot to increase those numbers, but there clearly is more that needs to be done.
Yes.
But this is a national problem, this isn't something specific to Springfield. The fact of the matter is, there aren't the candidates out there with the licensure to apply for the job, anywhere. But we send people out nationally recruiting, we have programs with colleges to provide pathways, we created a new teachers' club in every high school, provided scholarships at Westfield State, where kids are pursuing education. We've done a lot of creative things, we have a scholarship at Springfield College for minority students to get into, to get through and become teachers, but we all have to be part of making sure there's more people in the pool to hire that actually have the rigorous licensure that is required in Massachusetts. But again, this is not just a Massachusetts problem, it's a national issue, and to single out Springfield is a little short-sighted.
You know, we do the Teach for America.
Yep.
I greet them on Saturday mornings, that brings in a very diverse teaching population. We do the Freedom Writers, we, we've done that curriculum, we went to San Diego on the, the book and the movie, bringing in, uh, diversity in teaching on it, so there's a lot of initiatives we're putting out there. So people should be careful who they attach their wagon to moving forward. Any other unfinished business? Okay, a new business, I'd like to thank school committee woman, Latonya Naylor, reminding me, bringing up on attention on the, the walkouts that occurred, and how other districts were looking to penalize our students, and Superintendent Warwick for putting a proactive, to make this a teaching and a learning experience, to hear the expressions of our students, and knock on wood, we did not have one issue, uh, a day or so ago, when this occurred, yesterday, when this occurred with our, our schools, and our student body, who were very respectful in putting across their viewpoints on the tragedy that occurred in Florida. So I want to thank you, Latonya, on that. I want to thank Superintendent Warwick for being proactive and reaching out to the administration, all the principals, to make sure that we were respectful in hearing our students, and we made it a teaching and a learning experience, not a confrontational experience, which some were, you're getting, you're getting it right from my heart tonight, that some were looking, were hopeful that that was going to happen on it, so, thank you. New business? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Vice Chair Collins, or second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed, the ayes have it. Happy St. Patrick's Day, and thank you for watching. Good evening.